This meeting to order, it's Monday, May 8th is the County Council meeting. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk of the council please call the order?
We'll have the invocation.
Oh yes, we'll do the invocation first, I'm sorry.
I don't want to interrupt you, Chair.
Yes, no, 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 that's the most important thing. We're gonna need all we can.
Yeah, really. Dear Heavenly Father, may the, your truth be, be revealed, may your light shine brighter, may the voices of those most silent be heard loud and clear. Defend their cause, O God, through this governing body tonight. We pray for wisdom, we pray for strength, we pray for courage to do what is right and good for all the citizens of Beaufort County. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Now, will the clerk please call the rule?
Councilmember Tavernick?
Present.
Councilmember Reitz?
Here.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson here.
Councilmember Howard?
Here.
Councilmember Glover?
Here.
Councilmember Dawson?
Here.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Present.
Councilmember Brown, here. Councilmember Bartholomew?
Here.
Vice Chair McAllen?
Here.
Chairman Passamit?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Public notice of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act.
It is not in compliance, that's a lie. Quit lying to the public, you're not in full compliance.
That didn't take long.
And I'm not out of order. I'm telling the truth.
May I have a motion for approval of the agenda? Thank you.
I'll second it.
It is duly motioned and seconded for the agenda. Are there any questions about the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda will be approved without objection. Next is our minutes of March 27th of 2023. A motion, please.
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Glover makes the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Bartholomew makes the second, duly motioned and seconded. Any questions? Seeing none, the minutes will be approved without objection. Next we turn to our administrator, Mr. Greenway. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of County Council. Only two items tonight, I'm gonna introduce two employees, and then I will be done, as I typically do. I might ask Stephanie to come on up and join me, right here. You all heard from her earlier. It's always a pleasure when I can introduce someone that I had a hand in hiring, and then that I worked so closely with before my role drastically changed. So, this is Stephanie Najin, in our planning and zoning department. She is our passive parks manager currently, but when the budget is approved, her title will change to passive parks department director, because we are now building parks on the rural critical lands. Really, that long? She's been here five years, one month, and 27 days. Did you not want to add the minutes in there?
Yeah.
And seconds, say. She is responsible for all things passive parks, including acquisition, participation, planning and construction, public and visitor interactions, event coordination, land management, resource monitoring, exotic plant control, inter-agency coordination, maintenance oversight, and policy implementation. And she is a whirlwind. She has a lot of energy for this job. She does a great job for us. She does a lot of things, gets a lot accomplished in a very short amount of time. Something unique about Stephanie. Stephanie took a three-month sabbatical and volunteered for Wildlife ACT in South Africa to live in the bush and monitored endangered species at four national preserves. Wow. Good for you.
Thank you very much. In my five years, there's been ups, there's been downs, but mostly ups. And I am extremely grateful for the support of Eric in particular, and just administration as a whole, and County Council too, for passive parks in the program and the evolution of it as it has come to be. So, thank you.
So, let's get a picture right here. Come on over, Robert. One of the unfortunate things about my job is I don't get to interact with folks in our detention center as much as I would like to. But we're gonna introduce Mr. Robert Smalls this evening from our detention center. He's a Lance Corporal. He's been with us seven years on July 11th, 2023. He is responsible for inmates' care, custody, and control. He assists inmates with answering requests or concerns during their incarceration, verbally counsels and corrects inmates for facility rule violations, patrols housing units and secure areas, and reports any suspicious activities found. As you can tell, he is very meticulous in the way he prepares his uniform. He takes pride in the way he represents the department. He was one of five officers to receive the Impeccable Dress Award for being the best dressed officer January through March 2023. He was also awarded Employee of the Quarter during those same months. Lance Corporal Smalls is reliable and a team player. He works countless overtime hours on his days off to relieve the pressure for those officers working mandatory, mandatory double overtime per week. We have a drastic shortage in our detention center, and folks like Lance Corporal Smalls have to volunteer to work extra time to fill out those gaps. I very much appreciate your willingness to do that, take time from your personal life to, to provide that service. He began his correctional career in 2003 at the South Carolina Department of Corrections, where he worked for 13 years. In June of 2016, he joined the detention center team, the same year he lost his mother to cancer and his oldest son in a car accident on October 20th, 2022, while stationed in Seoul, Korea. Losing his son was very devastating, I can't even imagine that. He took that time to conduct self-assessment of his own life and realized he needed to make changes. Lance Corporal Smalls is grateful for the love and support of his detention center family and vows to continue to be a light to those in need. Thank you, sir, for your service.
Thank you.
I don't have too much to really say, but I just really wanted to say thank you. Thank you for this. This does a lot for me, more than you all know. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
He don't look a day over thirty.
Twenty-five.
I know, right? I hope I look as good as you when I'm your age. I thought you were like thirty.
Our next item is a presentation of a proclamation by Councilmember York Glover to the Beaufort County Detention Center, recognizing May 7th through May 13th as Correctional Officers Week. Mr. Glover?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is someone here, uh, who received this, I'd be glad to give it to Robert Smalls again.
Yeah, right.
Okay, great. Sure. I, I just wanna shake, um, your hand, and I wanna shake Robert Smalls' hand, so that I can say I shook Robert Smalls' hand.
We have several members of the Detention Center staff, but I think they're, they can come in.
Okay, sure.
Come on in. Yes, have them come in.
Yes, make your hand. Come on in. And how you want to be standing, Mr. Chairman?
Wherever.
Wherever, he said. Right there, and they're waiting to take a picture right there.
You want to stand?
But I'm gonna present this to the director here, Ms. Grant. This is a proclamation from Beaufort County, and it says, "Whereas in 1987, Congress passed and President Ronald Reagan signed Public Law 99-611 proclaiming the first week as May, of May as National Correctional Officers Week, and whereas the operation of correctional and detention facilities represents a crucial component of our criminal justice system, and whereas correctional officers play a vital role in protecting the rights of the public to be safeguarded from criminal activity, and whereas correctional personnel are responsible for the safety and dignity of the human beings charged in their care, and whereas the correctional personnel work under demanding circumstances and face danger in their daily work life..." and face danger in their daily work lives, work lives, often sacrificing personal and family time to provide ines- unnecessary, but thankless, unrecognized, and behind-the-scenes service to the public. And whereas the staff of the Beaufort County Detention Center has continually demonstrated their skill and professionalism in running one of the finest facilities in the state. Now therefore be resolved that Beaufort County Council proclaim May seventh through the thirteenth National Correctional Officers Week dated this eighth day of May, two thousand and twenty-three, and signed by our Chairman Joseph Passamit.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
To the members of council, county administrators, public safety director, um, we appreciate you all for your support over the past years, and to the public, we appreciate you. Thank you.
She's sorry, does it move up?
Okay, you want us to smile or just not?
The councilmembers behind you stand up. Will y'all stand up?
Well, I'm sure you won't see me. You're not gonna see me. Stand up. I don't think I'm gonna see you. You're not gonna see me.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we are at our, uh, first citizen comments. There are a lot of you who wish to speak about items on the agenda. Since this is the public portion of the agenda, I am going to alter it slightly to allow individuals who want to speak by four items other than item fifteen. That's the vast majority of you, and we'll not be able to get to everybody, but we do want to hear from a couple people who want to speak about other items on the agenda. Our first person is Dr. Christina Guaz from the County Board of Education. Dr. Guaz, good evening.
Good evening. Chairman Passamit and county council members. I am Christina Guaz and speaking tonight as the chairman and spokesperson for the Beaufort County Board of Education. As you are well aware, the school board desires fiscal authority, so we have the budget authority and millage rate-setting authority for the operation of the schools in Beaufort County. All fiscal authority is limited and subject to cap under Act three eighty-eight based on inflation and growth. There are only twenty of seventy-three school districts in South Carolina that currently have no fiscal authority, and Beaufort is one of them. Yet Beaufort County School District has an outstanding track record of fiscal responsibility over many years substantiating readiness for fiscal authority. Beaufort County School District has annual audits of no findings for more than twenty consecutive years, a clean forensic audit of debt service in two thousand and twenty, and two recent audits of P-cards or credit cards, which also had no findings. Beaufort shares the highest bond rating for school districts in the state, Moody's double A-one, with Greenville. Greenville has fiscal authority, and so should Beaufort. In each of the last three annual reports of subrecipient risk assessment by the South Carolina Department of Education, Beaufort County School District earned perfect scores of ten, indicating low overall financial risk. Currently, the school operating millage rate is set by the county, yet the school bond debt service millage rate is set by the school district. Unfortunately, the school district has been left with significant operating revenue shortfalls totaling over seventeen million dollars in the last property tax reassessments of tax years two thousand and nine, thirteen, and eighteen. We are currently in another reassessment year. This revenue shortfall has a negative impact on the district's ability to recruit and retain teachers. The Beaufort County Board of Education is an elected public body and solely responsible for the educational outcomes of the budget. We answer to the public, the voters, just as you do. Since the Board of Education membership is elected and subject to change every few years, we have procedures and policies in place to help ensure the continued outstanding track record of fiscal responsibility by the Beaufort County School District. We have earned the reputation of fiscal responsibility. We ask your support and appreciate the support we received today in the Finance Committee. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Mr. Huglen, please come forward. You want to speak about two items on the agenda.
I would love to. I'm gonna speak also at the end as well, is that correct?
You've signed up to speak at the end?
I wanna speak now, I get to speak at the end, is that correct?
That is correct.
Great. Also wanna submit a POA document right now for the end, so here it is. So you have that in your hand.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not gonna sit here and be lied to. I'm gonna, when I'm lied to, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let you know it. This council is violating their fiduciary responsibility to verify... Excuse me, sir. Yeah. Okay, you wanna speak about the agenda item?
Yes.
Okay, all right, fine.
Why I called you up?
I, I thought you were, you were allowing some people to speak on non-agenda, on items part-part of the agenda. Is that not correct?
What did I say? I said...
So some people get to speak about non-agenda items, and some people have to speak about the agenda items. But that's fine, I'll wait to the end and I'll speak my agenda item right now, and I have no problem. Uh, mine relates to a quick comment on the items originating from the Public Facilities and Safety Committee. Approval to award Beaufort County dirt road rocking contract and management, et cetera, et cetera. The only statement I want to make, and I would like to FOIA this, and I would like this entire council to get this information from the town manager and the town lawyers, is I want to see what funding, how much funding has been given to various projects that are using public monies for private purposes that violates constitutional state law. In other words, let me explain. You cannot give public money for private use that's not for the public good, reason, benefit, period. A recent lawsuit, give me, give an example. A recent lawsuit was filed against the Hilton Head Council, uh, Town Council. And this lawsuit was very simple. This lawsuit was against the town for funding six hundred thousand dollars to Seapines Plantation, which is a private gated community which does not have access by the general public. And that six hundred thousand was used for the dredging of Harbor Town. That is illegal because the public does not have access to that. So, I'm not saying that you're breaking the law, but I'd like to confirm and see if you are. And the way you do that is with FOIA, and you see it with full transparency and accountability. And that's what I'm here, and that's what I'm all about. I'm all about transparency, accountability, proven performance metrics, and we want to, and the, and the FOIA especially, we want to see it all. And you're in violation of FOIA. You're handing millions of dollars to these, to these chambers and ATAX monies and hospitality funds, and you never seen anything. You haven't seen any money. You haven't seen the budgets, you haven't seen the, the audits of the school district, the chambers, the town. Nobody, nobody in this council has seen anything. Thank you.
Queen Quett, please come forward.
Good evening. Glad to for the, uh, one more again. And I know I've been coming up this just soon. But so, growing up on St. Helena Island, that we've been cracking, we teep plenty about with the cultural protection overlay district that we gonna talk about again this evening. Yet it's something said, "If you live right, heaven belongs to you. If you live right, heaven belongs to you. If you live right, heaven belongs to you. Oh, heaven belongs to you." It also goes on for say, "Treat your neighbors right. Treat everybody right. Heaven belongs to you." I yet it is your while I've been a traveler. That why I ever did to the last meeting that the Planning Commission had. Cause I've been traveling, cause I a head of state, I ain't the head of St. Helena. So I have to go to other parts of the Gulligichi Nation. So I studied what this your word, rights. And I yet it people are cracking teeth on this your board of rights, but they act like we ain't got rights. So let me crack my teeth this other way, so all the community can understand as well as the venue. So, Gulligichis have land rights, water rights, civil rights, but overall, human rights. And I'm the head of state that ensured that we always fight for our human rights. And so a lot of times in domestic law, people ignore that. But Beaufort County has stood out before the world because you have an ordinance that recognizes that. And that is the St. Helena Island Cultural Protection Overlay District, to protect a culture that is internationally recognized, that is nationally recognized through the Gulligichi Cultural Heritage Act that I also worked on, and that people around the world want to see thrive and survive and come to this county to see it in action, living right, treating everybody right, treating our neighbors right. So, many people may not know, but I'm a poet, and words are something I love. So when I looked at the word rights, I wrote it out. And I got regulations impute, Gulligichis have the sustainability or the spirituality, whichever one you want to use the S for in rights. But resorts, PUDs, golf courses, gated areas are in opposition to the rural Gulligichi legacy of St. Helena Island. So we look to you to live right, to think right, to vote right again tonight, and to treat everybody right. And then heaven will not only belong to you in the future, but there's also a song I love that says, "I got heaven right here on earth." And for me, that heaven is St. Helena. She was named that because of her beauty. And I know that beauty got enhanced when she got adorned with who we be. We be Gulligichi anointed people. God bless you, council. I pray you vote to uphold the cultural protection overlay district again tonight along with the twelve thousand signatures I sent you earlier today. Thank you.
Arnold Brown?
Uh, good evening. Uh, I think I signed up on the wrong sheet, but I'll make the best of it. Uh, first of all, I want to thank, uh, Beaufort, uh, County Council for voting on the first votes, voting vote number one and vote number two as approving the CPO. Just want to thank you so much for doing that, and I hope, trust and pray that on this third vote you would do the same. Matter of fact, I hope it's gonna be a unanimous vote. Um, also want to thank our governor, Governor McMaster, Nancy Mace, Emory Campbell, Queen Quett. Those two had foresights, what, twenty-one, twenty-three years ago to see this, to have a vision about this, so definitely want to thank them. Community leaders, uh, church organization, sign makers, uh, nonprofit organizations, uh, and those who, uh, passed out flyers and just did, you know, tremendous work. So I'm, I'm thanking you in advance for approving, uh, the first and second reading in advance. Uh, in South Carolina and probably in every other state in the Union, uh, when real estate is purchased, the seller must disclose all known information that might be a negative impact on the buyer. Uh, the records will show that this was done. And, uh, during my lifetime, I have purchased somewhere between eighteen and twenty properties, okay? And each time, I had to make sure that information was disclosed on my own personal property. I have also held a real estate license for nearly thirty years, and whether I'm working with a buyer or a seller, I want to make sure that they understand what they're getting into. And I think that has been done. And, um, I, I've said it before and I'll say it again, that the city council is not, the FDIC is not a bailout agency. Uh, you know, you have to do the best with what you, you know, what you, what you, what you have, what you have purchased. Um, so, so the main thing is, just want to thank you in advance. It's been a lot of work on our part, it's been a lot of work on your part, and, um, we, we just want to thank you for that. Um, one other thing, maybe the next time I'm here, I might be wearing a T-shirt that says, uh, "A golf, a golf course in a gated community may not be for you, but remember the St. Helena Islanders and the CPO supporters stuck together like glue. If you're down and out and feeling blue, city council will look out for you." That makes a good campaign T-shirt. Okay, "Don't be concerned about the past. Beaufort County Council will make the CPO last." Thank you.
Faith River James?
Good evening. My name is Faith Rivers James, and I serve as the Executive Director of the South Carolina Coastal Conservation League with offices in Charleston and here in Beaufort. Thank you for the opportunity to address you on behalf of the Conservation League about the cultural protective overlay. The cultural protective overlay's clarifying language is key to reinforcing the overlay's original purpose and intent, that St. Helena Island be preserved so that her people can continue to live and thrive in this special place. The St. Helena community made an informed choice to reject high-end development twenty years ago, and they have still not changed their minds. It is important that their vision be upheld. Under the leadership of Dana Beach and Emory Campbell, the Conservation League began working with the Penn Center and the St. Helena community in the nineteen nineties. Mr. Bernie Wright and myself have continued to focus on reinforcing community-led efforts to conserve land, supporting the people and protecting the culture of St. Helena. Decades ago, this community made clear that its vision for the future of the island was to have it be a place where generations of Gulligichi families could continue to sustain their rich culture of farming, hunting, and fishing. This vision does not include golf courses, gated communities, and resort developments which threaten to explode their property tax assessment and to interrupt the cultural way of life for the community. Codifying these clarifications to the cultural protective overlay confirms that these uses have never been a part of the community-driven and everlasting vision of St. Helena's identity. Dedicated residents, community advocates, environmental groups, and historic and cultural preservation organizations have voiced their support for this clarification to support and sustain the way of life on St. Helena. We commend the St. Helena Island Resident-led Cultural Protective Overlay Committee and the pro bono lawyers who have helped, and my fellow law professors, who helped to spell out the nexus between the overlay and these prohibited uses. It is important that we thank council for commissioning the CPO committee to complete this important work, which was an essential part of Beaufort County's comprehensive plan. And we urge council to confirm what the community decided wisely some time ago. Thank you.
We've had our five speakers, but we do have, uh, two minutes left, and I'm gonna allow one more speaker, and that's Mr. Tropiano, who has signed up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, council. Delvio Tropiano, owner of Pine Island. Get to be with everyone again. Um, the items tonight, uh, are intended to strengthen the cultural protection overlay. In reality, every sign, sticker, comment is about me and my property. Um, over the last two readings of the ordinance, we haven't read one word of it. Uh, we've actually said my time, my name seventy-six times, and I've yet to hear one word about education, youth, investment, or stewardship. The ordinance supposed to be about strengthening St. Helena, making it a stronger district and a wonderful place to live, work, and play. When I moved to Beaufort County two years ago, yeah, I did want to build a golf course. What I stepped into was an opportunity to be a partner in creating a sustainable future for future generations of island residents to prosper, as you said, in the very place that their ancestors called home. In front of each one, council, and, um, to be passed out to the crowd here in a minute, is a model, a playbook, a map of what's called a purpose-built community. The model requires attention to all elements of a community to allow it to prosper. The bones of that are here. It's housing, it's education, community wellness, economic vitality, the Center for Air... It's housing, it's education, community wellness, economic vitality, the Center for Air Property, the Heritage Academy, Pace Program at the Penn Center, Head Start, St. Helena Library, Penn Center, ball fields, recreation. There's no way that we can't be helpful. There's so many incredible people trying to do unbelievable things, there's no denying that. What we want to do is be a part of that, to help create and provide for the very people that want this to be their home forever. I agree. What's missing in my mind, and people may not agree, is glue, an organization that can seamlessly integrate all of those vital components, people in strong-willed and hardened people to be able to do more, and committed annual resources. What we're trying to do, what I'm trying to do, is to take a lost piece of property, unless you're 159 years old and you haven't been on it, and create an engine that powers that revitalization, defined and led by the community. We have intentionally designed that engine, this business, to have maximum output directly into the community with minimum impact locally and environmentally. Fortunately, the property's perfect for that. Unfortunately, it's perfect for a golf course, 166 homes. That's what's made this so hard, is the association of a sport with cultural loss. I get it. I totally get it. And I also see it as ironic opportunity, and the very thing that is disdained has galvanized the community in a way that I haven't seen, and honestly, community leaders are coming up to me and say they haven't seen in 25 years. That's why we're here. To break the cycle, you have to break the mold. That's what we should be voting on. Thank you very much. Appreciate everything you do.
Okay, we will close the citizen comments.
Mr. Chairman, I have a point of order question.
What is your question?
I was number five on the list with all the comments on the agenda.
Thank you.
And these are, Mr. Chairman, Jack Smith, you represent the Penn Center. I don't understand what the point of order is.
Do you have something new to add to this?
I would like to.
You have something new to add to this?
Yes.
Please come forward.
Thank you. I apologize, but I'm aware the procedure can be changed quite that way. Thank you very much. My name is Jack Smith. I'm an attorney with Nelson Mullins, and I represent the Penn Center. I'm here first to thank you, of course, for the actions that you've taken with the first and second reading, and want you to please, of course, vote for the adoption at this third reading. More importantly, I want to thank the CPO Committee, the Land Use Committee, and the Planning Commission for their response to what started this. It was a staff amendment proposed in January that would have created an exception to what is prohibited by the CPO, and that would be an exception that would swallow the rule. It would swallow that protection. If we look at what's being protected, like the Gulligichi corridor comments that were submitted, like the National Historic Trust Preservation Office has submitted, like a lot of other national, international commenters have recognized, an environmental impact statement, and the National Park Service have recognized this area. And why is that? Why is it important? If you remember, this is an area that was populated after their chains of slavery were removed by those people who were put into the bellies of slave ships and brought here. So they brought their culture here. They survived generations of slavery. Then they've survived generations of being able to survive in a rural, natural environment that allowed this sustainability of their families and their culture. And that's what really this ordinance is about. It's a strong and appropriate ordinance that will help maintain their ability to thrive, to maintain their ability to be together and to have the, say, excuse me, in their own destiny. One thing that I would encourage, and the Penn Center is offering to assist, is to have further dialogue with that community and see what else they might need. Instead of just looking at this once and closing the book, you have, in fact, the comprehensive plan that has a lot of information about it and has some other recommendations. This is what's needed now, at this time, to confirm and to update the 24-year-old CPO and to ensure that this community that has responded and is now engaged is ready to talk and do more. We appreciate very much your interrupting, your schedule to allow me to speak to you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all for your comments. We'll move on to the liaison and committee reports. Is there any member of council which to make a report?
I was at the Southern Carolina Regional Development Alliance meeting last Tuesday before last, and I was appointed as, I took over the unexpired term of Paul Somerville. And I understand that you and some others are going to be going up to Columbia at the end of the month, like you did in Washington, so that's a good thing. And I'm really, really, really excited about being on this Regional Development Alliance. And I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for putting me on here, and I think we're going to do a lot of great things for the county, as well as the other seven counties that are involved in this, so anyway, thanks.
Thank you.
This is kind of anecdotal, but I think it's very interesting. I went to the Town of Fort Royal's meeting last week, and they will be meeting Wednesday, May 10th, but they have put a counter at the Cypress Wetlands, which has become more and more popular with the public. As you know, this is the time of year when the birds are, they had the birthday party for the birds last Saturday. They're averaging 417 visitors every day, with 790 as a high, visitors just to Cypress Wetlands. So it's become its own tourist attraction.
Excellent.
And the alligators, not just the birds.
Yeah, briefly, just on the consent agenda, a couple items that came out of my committee. One of them is the Beaufort County Dirt Road Rocking Contract for DeFuski. That is done on county roads. Our team and Jared's team actually got together to make sure that that was done in the entire cycle so we could save money on that, because we have to rock it over, because it is an island. So I just want to congratulate Jared and his team by condensing that and getting it done at one term to save the taxpayers money. And I will say that again, on our county-owned roads as well, that's been used for our dirt program for years now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any others?
So I attended the school board meeting, which was a little lengthy, but okay. It went till 10:20.
Oh.
But that's okay. And they had a really good presentation that I wish everyone could see by the citizen-led Oversight Committee. They are overseeing the tax dollars referendum funds for projects that were in the 2019 referendum to the tune of $344 million. And they've met 48 times to date. Any committee that meets 48 times, I think gets an award. But their charge is to act as a watchdog to monitor expenditures for proper use of those funds for facilities, and they reported the district is on track. Thirty-two projects are done, 25 in progress, and 24 in the design phase. And it's really a very, very good report. The school district also talked about summer school programming and camps, and then ended with a presentation of their proposed budget by Tanya Crosby, who's extremely knowledgeable, did a great job. So that was a school board meeting. Also, a bunch of us went to MCAS for a tour.
Oh, yes.
Which we want to really thank the base, but May is Military Appreciation Month, so I want to make sure we kind of talk about that. And I'll report about the community meeting when we get to Benton Lane.
Great, thank you. Mr. Dawson.
Mr. Chairman, at the April 27th Low Country Council of Governments Board of Directors meeting, there was a young lady by the name of Sarah Penelli, who gave a presentation on broadband funding for the region, the state. The Federal Infrastructure Act has appropriated $65 billion nationally for broadband. $42 billion has been allocated to the state of South Carolina to address underserved areas in South Carolina. Again, that contact from LCOG is for Sarah Penelli. In addition to that, there was also a young lady by the name of Ms. Tiffany Dassler, who presented another program called South Carolina Best, which is actually funding for brownfield issues in the LCOG region. There's $76,000 grant that's available for the state of South Carolina to address brownfield. And so I would ask our administration to follow up on those two presentations and see if we can't cipher some of that money to Beaufort County.
Thank you. Any other comments? For those of you in the audience, LowCOG stands for the Low Country Council of Governments, consists of four counties, Beaufort, Jasper, Hampton, and Colleton County. And when Ms. Brown was talking about the SRA, she's talking about seven counties in our Low Country Region for Economic Development. We not only include the four counties that I just spoke of, but we include Allendale, Barnwell, and Bamberg Counties as well. Okay, we are at the action items. I would ask a member of council for the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes the motion for, and Mr. Bartholomew makes the second. Dooley motioned and seconded. Any questions by members of the council? Seeing none, the consent agenda will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 11 and 12 came from the Finance Committee meeting that was held earlier today. The first one, item number 11, is a first reading of an ordinance by title only to make appropriations for county government and special purposes districts for Beaufort County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, ending June 30, 2024, to levy taxes for the payment thereof, to adopt law enforcement uniform service charges, user fee, to provide for the expenditure of said taxes and other revenues coming into the county, to provide for the expenditure of said law enforcement uniform service charges, user fee, and other matters related thereto. This is the first reading of the ordinance for the adoption of the budget. There will be three readings and a public hearing for the budget. So may I have a motion, please?
Make the motion.
A second now.
Mr. Lawson made the motion, Ms. Brown made the second, dooley motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the first reading will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 12 is the approval of a resolution to express Beaufort County Council's desire for the South Carolina General Assembly to take the necessary steps to amend the South Carolina Code of Laws to vest budget authority and millage rate-setting authority for the operation of the schools in Beaufort County with the Beaufort County Board of Education. May I have a motion?
I'll read that.
The motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. Ms. Howard made the motion, Ms. Tabernick made the second. Dooley motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir?
Yep, briefly. The squad stated earlier that they've done a fantastic job the last couple of years. I will be honest, I do have my reservations, not about the team that they've assembled now, but the changing of the guard is inevitable thing in this type of service. So I just hope that when this moves forward, which it's going to, I'm going to support it. I do think, you know, that right has been earned. But I hope that they put something in place to maintain that after those people leave that position and somebody else takes charge. I mean, my biggest thing to me is the teacher salaries. This means that there's no advocate at the county level for teacher raises, or pushing for a raise, or stopping a budget if a raise wasn't there. That relationship is no longer there. All we do is see it, and it means, all we do is just get our eyes on it like the public would. So I encourage them to continue in the direction they're going. I hope they continue to assemble a team that supports the teachers and the rest of the staff in that building, and I look forward to working with them on other operations, maybe even some type of housing, to help staff and teachers in the future, to see if that's something we can continue to grow, that relationship with Beaufort County and the school district. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I want to say, this has been long overdue, and so I'm supporting the resolution that's here. The greatest check and balance that we have are the voters, and we have voters, we are all elected officials, both council and the school board, and that's the greatest evaluation that anybody can have. So I'm going to support this motion going forward.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Tabernick.
If you, if people look on the School Board Association, fiscal autonomy, 32 districts in South Carolina have no overseeing body. The school board votes by majority for their millage and funding. There are 20 districts, and we're one of them, that have no authority, meaning county council must approve their budget and set the millage rate. So this ordinance will allow the school district to do their budget, set their millage rate, and act independently. So I'm totally in favor of it.
Mr. Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And yes, as we mentioned today in the Finance Committee, this is just a recommendation from our council to our delegated legislation. Our folks who represent us, and so this must be done at a state level. So basically, what this does is we are saying that the school board should have control over their budget, control over what they do, and not rely on us to hold their hands or to criticize them. Again, they are, as Mr. Glover mentioned, they are elected by the people, and they would then have to be accountable to the folks that had voted them in.
Any other comments? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection. Are there any objections? I see none. Item 12 is approved. Item number 13 is a public hearing. Congratulations. It is a public hearing and a second reading of an ordinance authorizing the redemption of the outstanding Beaufort County South Carolina General Obligation Bonds Series 2013A and other matters related thereto. Is there anybody in the public who wishes to make a comment about this item at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments. Therefore, I need a motion for the second reading of this ordinance.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes the motion, Mr. Glover makes the second. Dooley motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the second reading will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 14 is a public hearing and third reading of an ordinance for a zoning map amendment, rezoning request for one acre at 3 Benton Lane from T3 Edge to T2 Rural Center. Is there any member of the public who wishes to make a comment about this? Would you please come forward? Good evening. Please state your name, address, and you will have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Council. My name is Felicia Roth, and I'm the owner of the residential property at 4 Stillwell Road, directly to the east of 3 Benton Lane. I have appeared before you before to ask that you reject this application for rezoning as inconsistent with the Community Development Code, inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan, and harmful to the rural character of Pritchardville. At the request of county council, county staff hosted a meeting at Pritchardville Elementary. About 60 people came to quite articulately express their reasons for not wanting this change. They are primarily concerned about living near the potential undesirable uses allowed in the T2 zoning. They're very concerned about the domino effect of one rural residential parcel after the next getting rezoned, and how that will add to the congestion and unsafe conditions along that stretch of May River Road. In addition to the 60 people who spoke out at the community meeting, I have a petition against the zoning change with 416 signatures on it. My neighbors in Pritchardville are clear that they do not want to change the character of the area. County staff recommended denial of the application because it addressed or met just one of the nine criteria of zoning map amendment review standards. The planning commission recommended denial for the same reason. The Community Services and Land Use Committee recommended denial. County council asked to hear Pritchardville's opinion, and the people at Pritchardville spoke with thunderous unanimity, "We do not want rezoning." I urge county council not to substitute its opinion for the learned opinion of county staff and committees, nor over the strong opinion of its constituents. There is only one choice this evening, and it is to deny this application. And sir, if I may approach and provide the signatures.
Would you please give that to the clerk?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there any other member who wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll close.
Mr. Chairman, Cameron, do you want to speak?
No.
No? Okay.
I sent an email.
Okay, all right.
We'll close the public hearing portion. I would ask for a motion for the third reading of this ordinance.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Tabernick makes the motion. A second, please.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Mr. Dawson makes the second. Dooley motioned and seconded. Any discussion by county council? Ms. Tabernick.
So 3 Benton Lane is in my District 6, and I attended the meeting along with Councilman Reitz, and I want to thank Mark Davis and Rob. They explained it, Rob Merchant. Rob started by explaining it, had a big map up there, and I'll argue with Ms. Roth. I think there were over- I think there were over 100 people. I counted the ones behind me, too, Tom and I. So there were about 100 people, and it was a resounding no. Now, like any community meeting, I will be honest to say, a number of other issues came up that weren't really relative to this rezoning, but that's okay. The community wanted to speak. It was clear they don't want to change the character of the area, and they don't want this rezoned, and their fear is what could happen going forward. So for those reasons, I'm going to oppose the rezoning.
Any other comments?
Just one. Go ahead.
Okay, now go ahead.
I... With the first two readings, you know how I voted, and I'm going to concur with my colleague across the aisle here, Tab. He think took place is we went and we listened to the people. You know, to me, I don't... You know, one of the biggest things, how do we do our job if we don't listen to the people? So, okay? So this... Keep involved with what we're doing, without a doubt. Makes a lot of sense. So I want to thank you for that, and, you know... Paula, you want to say anything?
Can Mr. Merchant come up? Or is that not allowed?
Sure.
I have some questions for Mr. Merchant. Is he here?
Yeah.
Okay. I have a list here of the people that were at this meeting. Did we verify the addresses? That they lived in Pritchardville?
No. We just received... We allowed them to sign in.
There wasn't a microphone set up there either, right? Is that correct?
There was no microphone.
Okay. There's one signature on this list that stands out to me. Catherine Henley. Mrs. Henley lives with Mr. Henley. Mr. Henley sits on the Beaufort County Planning and Zoning Commission. I just thought that was a little odd myself. But I'd like to go back and talk about the inconsistent, unsafe conditions. I would like to share with everybody here what I saw on that property. I kept going by and going by to see if the sign was put up, and to me, once the sign was put up, I was... I didn't understand why we put May River Scenic Highway on there, because it was about taking this piece of property and putting a home on it, but changing to a commercial property so that an automatist can have an office there. That was my understanding. It wasn't about the scenic highway. Is that right? Am I wrong?
I'm not sure. What did the sign say that referred to a scenic highway?
The sign that they were... They put out public meeting, May River, scenic highway, whatever it is.
Huh.
Yeah. Yeah. I thought that was very misleading. I wasn't able to be at this meeting, but we were supposed to have the public meeting before the second reading, and it was turned the other way around. But I just... I just want to share a couple of things. I have 185 signatures of people that want it. I have 50 over here that don't want it. But I have a few things I want to share with everybody. I used to work with a young gentleman. He was a lawyer, and he's 34 years old now. And he was born and raised in Bluffton. His family was born and raised in Bluffton, and his grandparents were born and raised here. He said to me two things, and I've never forgotten. I used to ride my bike down the middle of 46. Can you imagine that today? Down the middle of 46? But he also said, "I grew up in the poorest county in one of the poorest states in the country." And I just was puzzled by that. But anyway, I went by... I did go by the area a few times because I wanted to see if the sign was up, and parked on the property, the empty lot that we're talking about, were two automobiles. One was black sedan, completely covered with tinted windows, and the other one was a pickup truck with a cab on the back. I almost stopped and asked the guy... Told the guy he left his lights on. Glad I didn't do that. But anyway, you know, I just... They say unsafe conditions. Maybe they need... The neighbors need to check out some of the neighbors that are hanging around there that probably don't belong there. I don't know. I don't know what the answer is, because you know what? I understand that 5 million people come to Savannah every year to visit. Last year was 15 million, like Queen Quetz said, you know, and my minister has said, and I say, "This is the promised land. This is... If you've come from north, this is paradise." And these people are coming, and they're going to need services. And what are we supposed to do? Are we supposed to call the governor and ask him to shut down the borders with the National Guard and don't let any moving vans by? I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. But all this... The doctor wanted to do was build a building in a residential neighborhood, and there is other commercial around there. So anyway, that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Okay. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, I just want to reiterate what Mr. Reitz and I heard. It was a resounding no to rezoning, and we listened to our residents. That's what we sat there and met about, and again, I will support no rezoning.
Okay. It sounds like we're going to have to have a roll call vote on this. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Tabernick? Councilmember Dawson? Councilmember Reitz?
No.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, no.
Councilmember Howard?
No.
Councilmember Glover?
No.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Brown?
No.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
No.
Councilman... Vice Chair McKellen?
No.
Chairman Passamit?
No.
The motion fails.
Our final item is a third reading of an ordinance for the text amendments to the Community Development Code, Article 3, Division 3.4, Section 3.4.50, Cultural Protection Overlay, Section 3.4.10, Purpose, and Division 3.1, Section 3.170, Land Use Definitions, Recreation Facility, Golf Course, to update definitions, regulations, and standards in the Cultural Protection Overlay Zone. A motion, please.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Glover makes the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Dawson makes the second. Dooley motioned and seconded. Comments from council, if any?
Chairman, I just wanted to say that, want to echo what was shared at the previous motion. The community has spoken, is very clear. I would also say that there's always been issues on St. Helena that goes way back. What comes to mind now for me is in 1927, when there was the bridge issue, and a lot of folks wanted the bridge to come, the cross from Beaufort to Ladies Island, and there were others who said no to that. And there was a battle and a debate, and I can tell you that folks from Penn Center was leading the charge to say to the community, "You do not really... You are not ready for that new bridge." And the reason being is that when that bridge happens, there's going to be a lot of changes, and we've seen that. And the most recent one, some years ago, we dealt with five lanes on St. Helena, and people talked about development and economic opportunity, and they said that basically, if you don't get a five-lane highway crossing Helena, you're not going to have any opportunity for economic development. The community said, "No. We do not want five lane because it's going to change St. Helena." And the community is coming out again, saying the same thing. We don't want the changes because it will change St. Helena. We know it's going to change. Everybody on St. Helena knows that it will change, but it's a gradual change that we can live with, and that's what we want. Somebody asked me several years ago when I got on council, "What's your thoughts about development?" And I said to him that if I got two houses in my neighborhood over a 10-year period of time, that's plenty of development for me. So that's where we are right now. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something very quick? There are many people in this room that have been at this issue for many, many years. There are four people on this council that just came in a couple of months ago. We are exhausted from reading and listening and meeting with everybody here. But I think you're going to find, with me and probably others, and I don't know how this vote's going to go, but we are elected to represent the people.
Yeah.
And I'd be remiss if I didn't share this with you. However this vote goes, I want you to think about that young man over there, that entrepreneur, Mr. Trupiano. I have spent hours, till sometimes 1:00, 2:00 in the morning, listening to you, talking, reading, and going through actual data that LVO put together. And I think Queen, Mr. Brown, Mr. Newt, everybody here that belongs to this committee that wants the best for your community, when the dust settles with this, I think you ought to meet with that gentleman. I think his idea actually could protect your island even a little bit more, and that's something for you to think about down the road. Take some of this stuff, clear your minds down the road, and really look at what this is saying. Got to tell you, museums, money, making money year after year for your community, our community, holy cow, I got to tell you... And the last thing I'll say is to you, Mr. Trupiano, regardless of how this goes tonight, hang in there. Stay the course. I like the way you think. I like how, in major opposition, you stayed the course, and you helped strong. Fair enough?
Any other comments?
I have.
Mr. Cunningham.
Yeah. I guess I have two questions, and then a couple of comments. One's actually for Mr. Glover, just because of the statement you just made. You were talking about the bridge for St. Helena bringing growth. But a couple of months ago, you were advocating for another bridge to St. Helena in our meetings when we were talking about transportation. So I just want to put that... I agree with you, it's going to bring growth, but we've also been up here advocating to get St. Helena another bridge because of the traffic issues they have currently.
Yeah. The only difference is that they were advocating being prepared for. Over time, we're, you know, we're becoming more educated and better prepared for.
And I agree. I think there needs to be more infrastructure for the roads, and yeah.
This is not a dialogue. Just make your statement.
My second question is, I think, I guess it's for our county staff, possibly. The CPO, if this passes, the current gates or fences on these communities, are they going to be forced to be removed if they're within that 65 square mile?
There's no gate in St. Helena. There's no gated community on St. Helena.
No. Right. There is no.
So I'm not going to say there is or there isn't, but if there are gated communities on St. Helena currently, or properties with gates on them, no, they would not have to be removed because those gates would be grandfathered, or what we commonly refer to in the planning world as legal non-conforming uses, meaning that they were legally there before the law changed, and the only way it can go away is if somebody were to remove it for some specified period of time, you know...
Then they couldn't put it back.
On their own, they wouldn't be able to put it back up. Now, if it was an act of God that removed it, then they would be able to take it, put it back up.
Yeah. That's what I figured the answer would be.
Right.
So I guess my next question is, obviously, when this passes, and it's going to pass, my guess is probably 9 to 2. It's going to pass, to be honest. We all know that's probably coming. But my question is, since that property currently has a gate on it, whether Mr. Trupiano keeps it or doesn't give it, that means he would be still grandfathered in to have that gate that's currently on there.
If there's a gate... If there is some sort of gate there, then he would be allowed to keep that.
Speaking to the administrator. Thank you.
He'll be able to keep that gate.
He would be able to keep that gate.
If there is a gate there.
That's exactly what I thought.
Importantly, council needs to understand, and as I pointed out in my previous meeting, is that it prohibits gated communities, it does not prohibit gated driveways, and there's plenty of neighborhoods, particularly down on Hilton Head Island, where the community does not have a gate, but the driveways on some of the deeper, larger parcels, they all have security gates, so that would not be prohibited underneath. So I just wanted to record to be clear about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for clarifying that. And then I guess my statement briefly.
You were next, right?
To be... No, you're fine. You're fine. I just wanted the clarity to make sure that we're all on the same page, that's all. I guess my last statement will be is, it's going to pass today. We all know that's coming. I hope that, like Mr. Reitz just said, that there is some dialogue between the community and the property owner, because the next step is residential community on there, whether it's 100 homes, 150. People can agree, disagree, but the county cannot stop that. It cannot be stopped. Whether it's him, or he sells it off to another developer, even in this CPO, it's still allowed. So I just want to make sure, I hope we're all clear on that. We actually had Mr. McKellen.
Quiet, please.
Mr. McKellen said it perfectly at the last meeting, basically spelled out exactly what would be allowed in the CPO and what wouldn't be. We want to support the residents. We just want to make sure that the residents have all the information at hand. I think we've done that over this time, and let it play out the way it may be. I hope that there is some type of resolution between the property owner and the community, because I'd hate to see it go to somebody in the future that legally does not even have to communicate with the community whatsoever and can do whatever they want to do without saying one word to the community. So I do echo what Mr. Reitz said. It's 100% true, developers do not have to communicate with the community. All they have to do is file with the county. I want to point with what Mr. Reitz said. It takes a lot. It takes a lot for, whether I agree or disagree with the project, it takes a lot for a person to be one of just a few in a room to stand up against everybody else. So whether your project works or does... Wow, this... I'll tell you, I've sat up here time and time again and listened to everybody and read every email, but every time I speak, people love to cut me off. All I do is ask for the same respect that I continue to give you. Thank you.
Quiet, please. Are you finished?
However this goes, congratulate the community for going out and, you know, standing for what they believe in, and developer for standing for what he believes in. That is the greatest thing about this country. That is the greatest thing we stand for, that everybody has that right to do that respectfully towards each other. I hope that that maintains after we're done with our business today, just like we have... Thank you so much.
Chairman, I have one question.
Ms. Brown.
Oh, okay.
Okay. You can go if you want.
No, no, no. You go ahead. I was calling for the question.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make three points tonight. First, I want to sincerely apologize to anyone that I may have offended at the last county council meeting. I never meant any disrespect. I'm new at this, and I'm not very good at talking in front of people. Second point, Mr. Chairman, we got this booklet last week. I don't know if anybody's seen this. Mr. Glover? Mr. Chairman, can we ask Mr. Glover what transpired at this meeting on April 23, 2022? Was with ministers and LVO, is that right? That was in the book that we were handed last week.
Oh, 2022.
Yeah, last year.
Yeah. I mean, what transpired?
Yeah.
Mr. LVO came to my community. I met with some ministers at the community, and to introduce him to the community. That's basically what happened. He talked about his project, no more than he has shared his project here today to you. That's basically, that's what he said. And the community of leaders asked questions. They engaged with him at the time, but there was... was never an endorsement at all for this project. That's basically what it was.
Okay.
It was the first time he came to St. Helena in the community, and I said to him that I would introduce him to some leaders, and I did. And I also introduced him to some other leaders, and he met with them too, as well. I introduced him to the Open Land Trust, he met with them as well. So, I mean, I was doing my part, introducing him on his concept, and the thing that intrigued me, since you asked the question about this whole project, was I heard about St. Hellonaville. But I never knew that I knew where St. Hellonaville was, until I got invited to go over there, and when I got there, I told last meeting that Mr. Espy Wright farmed that land for years. So I was on that property, I just didn't know that was St. Hellonaville. And the reason I didn't know that, because we weren't taught about St. Hellonaville. Now I learned from the librarian at St. Helena four years ago about St. Hellonaville, but I never knew where it was. And so when he told me about St. Hellonaville and the archaeological study that they were doing, I was intrigued. And I said, I'd like to go and see. And I did go and see. That's all. Okay?
Yeah. All right. Mark Lawson?
Thank you for the opportunity to express that.
Yeah, did you like dig? Did you dig for stuff on the property?
We visit, we visit, no, I didn't go digging.
I think that, no, I think that's really cool. You said, I can't.
Yeah, listen, we're, we're off topic now. It's either we're going to approve this or not. You had your comment, Mr. Lawson?
Yep, now I will, I'll make it, I'll make it brief, and, and what we're here today is actually to vote on strengthening the CPO. It's not about developing, it's not about other property, you know, but, but again, everyone needs to know the facts of what has transpired and what's going on. So, so again, now there, there is this rush to, to strengthen the CPO, and that's what we're voting on tonight, and that's what I'm going to vote for, strengthening your CPO. Obviously, there, there must have been some type of wording in there that there was a need to do this. So that's something else for y'all to consider is, is whenever this purchaser purchased the property, it was under the old CPO, we're now going to strengthen it. So, just as has been mentioned here before, you know, we look at property owners and property owners' rights, we're just not talking about Pine Island, we're talking about all of St. Helena and what happens in the future, because it's going to happen. This is not the first, this is not the last, you're going to have many, many more parcels that come up. And again, it's something that, we're here to, to, to pass this, to strengthen it at, at the request of, of the owners there. But as, as Tom mentioned, Pine Island's going to be a neighbor of yours, it would be worth your while to sit down and figure out what is best for him as it, as the owner, as yourselves, as, as the residents there, for you all to work something out that is best for everybody and, and not just best for, for one side.
Okay, will the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Tavernick?
Yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Brown?
No.
Councilmember Bartholomew? Vice Chair McKellen?
Yes.
Chairman Passamit?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, we are at our second citizen comment period. We have a few members who wish to speak. The first member is Robert New.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a long four months, and much of what transpired probably needs to be reviewed moving forward, and we know there's much work to be done regarding the issues regarding Pine Island and the CPO. People of St. Helena want to thank county council for voting tonight to be on the right side of history.
Mr. Troppiano? No?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. Thank you, council, for your patience and deliberation over the last four months. Sincerely appreciated, and honestly, our team is proud that this is going on. It's an awesome thing to watch in action, and what I'm proud to say is that I've had people come up to me and say that the very thing that they've been fighting for since you've been here and since we've all been here is continuing, and there's renewed energy in this community that if I leave this earth tomorrow, I'll be totally cool with it. I appreciate it. Thank you very much for all your work and, and echoing what a lot of council members said. Everyone's got my phone number, works both ways, would love to have a conversation. Thank you very much.
Skip Hoagland, Windmill Harbor. Council is violating their fiduciary responsibility to verify all tax funds that are being illegally used by recep, many recipients, including the chamber. You're in violation of FOIA and the Supreme Court ruling. Council continues funding without seeing any receipts or invoices in how tax recipients spend millions of money with no contracts and no audits. Council funding some nonprofits that do not legally qualify to receive tax funds under South Carolina law. It's illegal to use tax money for private purposes that is not for the public good, use, reason, and benefit. Council is allowing nonprofit CVBs and chambers to illegally use tax funds for 35 years. Council is violation of DMO procurement law, fair bidding to local media and agencies. Law says one or two DMOs can be hired. Tax recipients at the end of the year must submit a full accounting. You must file a lawsuit against the chamber and the CVB to force them to turn over this information. Council allowing the Hilton Head Bluffton Chamber to take over $1 million of ATAX funds to Canada to develop a website. The chamber hijacked ownership versus taxpayer ownership. Beaufort CVB did the same. What's happened to these websites, HiltonHeadIsland.org, BeaufortSC.org, visit Bluffton when a new DMO was hired under procurement. You are allowing the CVBs and chambers to co-mingle funds and upsell millions of advertising on their illegal websites. A CVB chamber is laundering and secretly pocketing all the profits, unfairly competing with local businesses, and also tax funds to buy keywords on Google to drive more traffic dominance and illegal advertising sales in violation of IRS 501(c)(6) Ubit tax codes. Council are all members by secret illegal use of tax money to join the chambers by Greenway and Kevany versus using your own tax money. You must ask Rob Wells and Bill Miles for access to all the CVB accounting under the nonprofit corporation law. Since you use tax funds to join, now you're all taxpayers' proxy. Now all taxpayers in this room are members of the chamber, and we get to see that money because tax money was used. The Low Country Golf Owners Association is also ATAX funded, no receipts, no invoices. Bill Miles and the chamber is a partner in this nonprofit tax scam with Kerry Corbett and Brad Marrow from Hilton Head. Lawyers Coltrane, Finger, and Gruber all drafted illegal fraudulent Hilton Head Chamber DMO contract with no counting provision. And Kevany has not drafted a contract for Beaufort. Why is that? Why have, Mr. Greenway, Mr. Kevany, why have you not developed a contract so we can have an audit and see how this money can be legally used by the Beaufort Chamber? Why haven't you done that? And I might add the Black Chamber, and I want to make a comment about the Black Chamber. We need to get over all that.
Thank you for your comments.
We need to be one chamber, we need to be one people, it's about our character.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Lynn Greeley?
I'm speaking for Ms. Greeley, and I just gave you a DMO. Ms. Greeley is scared, she, she does not want to speak because she might be interrupted, she might be sued, she doesn't know what's going to happen, because it's happened to a lot of it. So I'm going to read Ms. Greeley's three-minute comment for her.
She's not going to be scared.
No.
She's not going to be scared. Nobody's going to bother, nobody's going to bother her.
Right.
She doesn't want to do anything to her.
Yeah, that's all, I'm going to go ahead and speak for her. And, and if that's okay, thank you. So I want to explain to everybody, what is a nonprofit chamber organization? It's a business association organized to promote business members only and not run a business. It can't make a profit for the employees of a chamber. Can be no pay to, pay to play, no favoritism, or co-mingling or laundering tax funds for illicit advertising profits, then bury these in high salaries and benefits to chamber employees to show no profit on year-end tax returns. It's not possible for a Bill Miles and a chamber to pay himself $500,000 salary, a $2 million home with illegal use of tax money. Ask the FBI and see what they say. This deal disqualifies the chamber as a nonprofit organization exempt from paying taxes. They cannot be in any business whatsoever that's normally carried on by a for-profit taxpaying company, or they lose their nonprofit status. And they must pay IRS Ubit taxes unrelated business income, or be considered in tax default and forced, forced to pay all they owe. If criminal activity is discovered, an arrest, convictions, and prison would surely follow, and that's like, just like happened at the Palm Beach CVB Chamber, you can read it online. The IRS defines the chamber business league as an association of people of shared business interests. The league must promote the common interest of members, must not be engaged in business for profit, and must not provide services to individuals the way a for-profit business does, or use high salaries, perks, benefits, lavish entertainment, bonuses, et cetera, to launder the money and hide the money to zero out on their tax returns at the end of the year. Chambers of commerce promote the economic interest of just business members in a given area, such as cities like Hilton Head, Beaufort, Bluffton, Charleston, Myrtle Beach, Orlando, Atlantic, et cetera. Fact is, the Beaufort CVB chambers are legal operations, they're operating as for-profits disguised as nonprofits to trick the IRS in our community. Only the Greater Bluffton Chamber is legally operated and not tax-funded. Hilton Head, Beaufort, and Black Chamber are tax-funded. This, this detail, this, this use of tax money must be provided to the taxpayers by council who issues these taxes and subject to tax FOIA laws. If this council does not comply to my ATAX FOIA, it will result in litigation and paying the taxpayers legal fees, and Bluffton, Hilton Head, and Beaufort councils are in FOIA violation, and they must comply. Folks, we are in big trouble in South Carolina. The codes and rules and the ATAX laws are not only illegal, but they're, but they're, they're violating the IRS federal regulations which prevail over local and state rules.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Is there any other business to come before council?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I resent the fact that Mr. Hoagland was able to speak twice. And I think that, you know, the way he's going, he could speak three times, because he could speak for somebody else three times. I think that.
We'll, we'll deal with that in the future.
Yeah, I support your effort in this.
If I want someone to speak for me, I'll have them speak for me. Is that a POA?
You can, you can actually, you can submit, you can submit that to us. You can submit that to us. Thank you.
Okay. There being no further action, this meeting is adjourned.